Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2021. Before I start, I would like to make sure that each and every one of our employees know how much the Board of Education appreciates your efforts each and every day under very difficult and trying circumstances. Call and roll, please, Laura.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four on the agenda is approval of the agenda as presented. Kind of a motion, please.
Come on.
Second.
Laura, call and roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item number five on the agenda, the hearing of the public. The Board of Education provides this as a convenient opportunity before, for public comment, before any official action is taken. If you would like to address the board, I would ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address. If a student is coming to the podium, you just need to state your name. Please limit your comments to three minutes as we have other items on the agenda. Anyone want to come speak to the board? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Paul Subjack, 5777 Hittig Green Drive, Washington Township. No. No means no. That was the theme of the citizens who opposed the most recent Belbrook school levy. It was the third time that the Belbrook Board of Education placed a levy request before the voters for approval. During the campaign and before each levy vote, the pro-levy supporters outlined in great detail the cuts that would have to be made if the levy was not passed. Three times, the voters rejected the levy request. So what is the Belbrook Board of Education doing in regard to three successive levy defeats? They're discussing how to put this levy back on the ballot again. It seems that a "no" does not mean "no." So what does the levy defeats in Belbrook have to do with our school district? Well, we have an expiring levy that this board has already begun discussing on when to place it on the ballot. In those discussions, this board has already commented that it will be placed on the ballot with sufficient time to place it on the ballot again should the voters reject the levy. It appears that in Centerville, like Belbrook, "no" doesn't mean "no." By placing a defeated levy back on the ballot, is this board declaring that those who voted against the levy are incapable of understanding the ramifications of no vote? Is the board declaring that individual voters examining their family's financial situations are incapable of determining what the proper allocation of their expenditures are? In the closing months of 2019, I requested that each board member go on the record during a public meeting explaining why they intend to reject the will of the voters should the levy be defeated. You already have declared that you intend to place this levy, the upcoming levy, on the ballot in a timeframe that allows you to put it back at a set time. And once again, call on the board to go on the record, explain to the public why they will not accept a negative result of a levy request should that occur at a ballot. You are all logical and independent thinkers and individuals. Your explanation of why "no" does not mean "no" is awaited. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Seeing no one, we will go to item six on the agenda, which is honors. And I call on Dr. Henderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. Tonight, we have Rajeev Goyle, who is representing the Centerville Education Foundation. And he has some helpers with him tonight that he will be introducing here in just a second. And tonight is a great night because this is the evening. January is always the board meeting where the Centerville Education Foundation presents checks to teachers who have written grants. And these grants will be funded by the Centerville Education Foundation so that these teachers and other staff members can participate in this grant program and do special projects and special things for their children. I know that we have usually, because of social distancing, I think tonight we just have one representative from each grant receiving the check tonight. And we'd like you to receive the check and then have a seat back in the audience. And then after Rajeev is finished introducing everybody, Sarah would like to grab a picture. But she's got a creative idea to allow everybody to social distance out in the back of Central. She's going to get up on the steps and take a kind of a long-range picture as well. So if you could bear with us, and after you get your check tonight, you can follow Sarah back out to the back of Central there, and she'll snap a picture for our public relations opportunity. So I'll turn it up to Rajeev. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Hello, my name is Rajeev Goyle, and I'm proud to be on the Board of Trustees of the Centerville Education Foundation. This here is Matthew Corey. He's a senior here at CHS. And he is one of our interns for this year at the Centerville Education Foundation. One of CEF's missions is to fundraise on behalf of the school district and apply those funds in ways that maintain Centerville School's status as the absolute best place to learn, even in the midst of a pandemic. We do that partly through our teacher grant program where teachers can submit a proposal for a special project in their classroom or building that goes above and beyond the normal curriculum. CEF evaluates those proposals and then awards grant money to teachers so that they can execute on those projects without having to dig for loose change under their sofa cushions. This year, because of the unique circumstances, we decided to award 11 grants in total, which is fewer than we have awarded in past years. However, some of the grants this year are much larger in terms of dollar amounts in the hopes that they will have a large impact across the whole district. We also have chosen to focus on grants that help teachers manage the challenges of the COVID pandemic, such as the challenge of having a mix of students, some of whom are remote and others who are in person, making sure students don't have to share supplies and materials, and purchasing tools that encourage and remind students to maintain a safe distance from others. And while I'm sure some teachers would prefer if students were required to stay six feet or even 12 feet from each other even after the pandemic is over, right now, it's especially important. This year, Centerville teachers have had to work harder and get more creative than ever before, and all of us sincerely appreciate everything that they're doing. CEF is hopeful and proud that these grants will help them in some small but measurable way. There's more information about each of these grants on our website at centervilleeducation.org. But for now, I'll just give the names of the grants to teachers in a brief summary. So first, we have Family Game Night by Ms. Carrie Shade, Ms. Megan LaMaster, and Ms. Emily Faust. This grant will benefit every student from pre-K up through the fifth grade at all schools, and therefore involves over 3,000 students. Games and activity kits will be purchased and distributed to all families. The main objective is to introduce the new elementary math program, Bridges, to those families. The instructional coaches will host two interactive family game sessions via Zoom. And families will participate in a game night from the comfort of their own homes. Congratulations, Carrie Shade, Megan LaMaster, and Emily Faust. Cultural Awareness for Centerville's Youngest Learners by Amy Ott, Mary Ankenbauer, Megan LaMaster, and Mindy Clyde from Primary Village North. This grant will benefit all students at Primary Village North. The goal is to purchase games, puzzles, dolls, figurines, and books that promote cultural awareness and diversity in these young kids. This will contribute to a welcoming environment where all students, regardless of their culture, feel valued. It will also provide an opportunity for all children to see representation of their home cultures, race, and ethnicity woven through school environment and their experiences at PBM. Congratulations, Amy Ott, Mary Ankenbauer, Megan LaMaster, and Mindy Clyde. Safe, Social, and Sensory Fun Blacktop Makeover from Katie Parker, Katie Barker, I apologize, Principal at Klein Elementary, and Rebecca O'Neil, Principal at Normandy Elementary. This grant will benefit all students in all of our elementary schools, Klein, Normandy, Driscoll, Stingley, Weller, and Dr. Johnhold. The goal is to purchase reusable activity stencils that can be used to paint activity ideas onto the playground blacktop for use during recess. These stencils provide ideas such as yoga stations and various movement challenges. This way, students can play alongside one another without getting too close to each other as the stencils will define where to do each activity. Congratulations, Ms. Barker and Ms. O'Neil. NearPod, an interactive way to engage all learners from Sue Kimble, Taylor Absher, Joe Forbes, and Anna Randolph at Johnhold Elementary. As a result of the pandemic, finding effective ways to teach using online resources has become ever so important. This grant will benefit all fifth-grade students at Dr. Johnhold Elementary. It will be used to pay for four annual gold subscriptions to the NearPod learning system for the fifth-grade instructional teaching. Currently, teachers are using the free version of NearPod, and the students really enjoy the interactive features. However, the free version has certain storage limitations, which means that the teachers have to constantly delete their old lessons in order to make room for the new ones. With the gold subscription, teachers will have more storage and additional features to make the system more usable for everybody. Congratulations, Sue Kimble, Taylor Absher, Joe Forbes, and Anna Randolph. Playground and Indoor Movement Paths from Maura Dressel and Sarah Monvilleers at Stingley Elementary. This grant will benefit all second through fifth-grade students at Stingley Elementary. It will be used to purchase paint and other supplies, which will be used to design both an indoor sensory path and an outdoor movement path on Stingley's playground with ideas for various physical activities. The design will be influenced by student input. The paths will be used by all students, especially those who need to move in order to be productive. It will also encourage students to maintain a safe distance from each other while playing at recess. Congratulations, Maura Dressel and Sarah Monvilleers. Pondering Pellets by Eric Hearn-Hagan at Stingley Elementary. This grant will benefit all fifth-grade students at Stingley Elementary. It will be used to purchase owl pellets, forceps, and reusable dissection trays to be used as part of a science unit on ecosystems. Students will dissect the owl pellets as well as the various skeletal parts found inside and learn about predator-prey relationships. Typically, this activity would be done in pairs. But due to the COVID pandemic, this grant will allow the classroom to purchase enough supplies so that each student can complete the project independently with their own set of supplies. Congratulations, Eric Hearn-Hagan. Read Aloud: In the Remote World by Caroline Brown at Stingley Elementary. This grant will benefit all fifth-grade students at Stingley Elementary. Due to COVID protocol, students can't share materials like they used to. So this grant will be used to purchase individual copies of three different books to be read by the fifth-grade classes, whether the students are learning remotely or in person. The three books are Island of the Blue Dolphins, Hidden Figures, and Tuck Everlasting. Congratulations, Caroline Brown from Stingley. Sensory Room by Judith Hensley and Stacy Ristie at Watts Middle School. This grant will benefit certain students at Watts Middle School who are in need of sensory stimulation. There is space in the building that is already reserved as a sensory space, but there is little sensory equipment in the room. This grant will be used to fill the space with equipment that encourages de-escalation in behavior and stimulate the senses in an alternative way. Congratulations, Judith Hensley and Stacy Ristie. Class Act with Glass by Alice Tavani at Watts Middle School. This grant will benefit about 200 seventh-grade students at Watts Middle School. The money will be used to purchase tools and supplies for use during the students' art class. This project is all about the study of glass. And as part of this unit, students will create their own pendants using a balance of shapes and colors in the medium of glass. Congratulations, Alice Tavani. Vocation Tasks for Diverse Learners with Varied Abilities from Brittany Lewis and Daryl Shelton at Centerville High School. This grant will benefit students at CHS who participate in the community-based learning program. These students have a wide range of abilities and are identified with multiple disabilities. The money will be used to purchase supplies to allow these students to build and master certain skill sets that are necessary for vocational tasks and jobs. Congratulations, Brittany Lewis and Daryl Shelton. And finally, and I believe this person is not here as well tonight. We'll get their checks to them somehow. Using a Graphics Tablet to Annotate in Chemistry Class by Matthew Hess at CHS. This grant will benefit students in Mr. Hess's chemistry class at CHS. The money will be used to purchase a graphics tablet, which students can write on using a stylus. When a student is called upon to work out a problem in front of the class, rather than writing on the whiteboard or on paper, students will use the tablet to show their work. The tablet is connected to a projector so that the entire class can see the problem, including those students who are in person as well as those who are remote. Congratulations, Matthew Hess. Thank you, everybody. As I said before, if you want to learn more about any of these proposals, feel free to visit our website at centervilleeducation.org.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rajeev. Before people go get their picture taken, we have one more honor that I'd like to explain and make some comments about. And so every year, the month of January is proclaimed to be School Board Recognition Month. And so tonight, I have the honor of recognizing our five elected officials who are all sitting up here, who lead a great team here in Centerville City Schools. And I'd like to, first of all, introduce them and then make a few comments about them as well. So our president for the year 2021 is Mr. Jeff Schreier. He's been on the board since 2008. So let's give him a round of applause. Mrs. Megan Sparks, down there towards the end, next to Mrs. Sauber, is Vice President this year. And Megan has been on the board since 2018. Thank you, Megan. And then, board members. Dr. David Rohr here to my left has been on the board since 1994. Congratulations. Mrs. Allison Dernbaugh is our newest member of the Board of Education, and she's been on for one year, started in January of 2020. And last but not least, Mr. John Dahl, who's been on the Board of Education since 1992. So thank you, John. So I think a lot of times, our community just thinks that the Board of Education really just comes and attends meetings. But there's a lot of extra time that these five individuals put in. They work very hard to always create a positive, nurturing environment for staff and students. But they spend a lot of their time by things that I'm sending to them, that I'm writing to them, that I'm calling. They're always on call. I cannot remember a tougher year that we've all experienced. And I know having the support of these five elected officials has made a great difference in what we've done, the decisions that we've tried to make for the better of our school district, for all the students and staff, and for everybody involved. So they're always on call, and they do a great deal of responding back to individuals' parents. I certainly appreciate their support. I know the administrative team appreciates your support. I know the staff appreciates your support. And I know the students benefit from your support. So again, thank you to all of you. There is a, from the Ohio School Boards Association, a certificate there that's been personally put together for all of you. And then there is a little memento from the students and staff of Centerville Schools in appreciation for your leadership and the support and everything that you do for kids every single day. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you, Rajeev, for making the presentations tonight. And congratulations to all the grant award winners. If you would exit out, maybe, and Sarah's going to try to snap a socially-distanced picture in the back of Central. So thank you again, everybody. Congratulations.
All righty, back to the agenda here. We are on Agenda Item Number Seven, Administrative and Board of Education Reports. I will call on Mrs. Sparks for 7A, which is the Student Board Reps.
The students are still working really hard on what they reported on last week, so they have nothing new currently to report tonight. Thank you.
Item 7B, the Legislative Report. Again, Mrs. Sparks.
There is not much to report tonight, which is normal for this time of year due to individuals starting their new political positions. Governor DeWine signed nine bills into law, but I'm only going to report on the few that I feel have an impact on our district. House Bill 409. This bill modifies student attendance requirements at certain e-scholes. It changes education law for the 2021 school year to provide school districts continued flexibility and relief during the COVID-19 pandemic, and provides flexibility to the school districts regarding educational requirements of substitute teachers for the 2021 school year. House Bill 436. The bill requires districts by the 2022-2023 school year to administer annual dyslexia screenings for students in grades K through 5. House Bill 436 also requires the establishment of a multi-sensory structured literacy certification process for teachers employed by the district or schools who provide instruction in grades K through 3. The bill also requires all K through 3 teachers and special education teachers in grades 4 through 12 to complete between 6 and 18 hours of professional development over a set timeframe. And I was unable to find what that set timeframe was. Senate Bill 68. The bill requires the state model curriculum for high school students on proper interaction with police officers during traffic stops and other encounters. It requires districts to incorporate this curriculum into at least one course required for high school graduation. And once again, I couldn't really find the details of what that would entail. And just an FYI, the Ohio Senate releases committee chair and member assignments. Senator Andrew Brenner will be the new education committee chair. And that is the new report tonight. Thank you.
Any questions or comments on this? Okay, we are on Agenda Item 7C, Special Education Child Count. I will turn 7C over to Dr. Henderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. I'm going to invite Mrs. Tammy Dear, our Director of Student Services, to the podium. And she'll be making the Special Education Child Count report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. So tonight, I'm going to talk about not just special education, but student services at Asslehold. Last week during our work session, the board had questions about the number of students we have in the district that have chosen to homeschool, or the number of families meaning students who are being homeschooled by their parents. We also are going to talk about our scholarships. So students who have a disability can take two different scholarships and attend outside of the district. And then we're going to talk about special education as we need to talk about it every year at this time. So the first thing that we actually have for homeschooling is, and I've shown for the past three years where our numbers were with homeschooling. You will see in the 1819 school year, we had 200 students who were being homeschooled by their parents. This is actually different than doing a remote program at home. So it's different than like K-12 online. So this is actually the number of students whose parents have chosen to choose their own curriculum and educate them at home. In 1920, we actually went up to 252 students. And then in the 2021 school year, for this school year, we're at 397. Now, my office is lucky enough, or unlucky enough, I'm not sure which, to get those applications. And a lot of families have indicated to us that they chose to homeschool for this year in particular because of the pandemic. So we anticipate a lot of those families will be coming back when we get back to something more of a normal for all students. Then, looking at our scholarships. Again, in order for a student to qualify for one of the scholarships, you have to have a disability. This child has to have a disability. And on the John Peterson Scholarship, it is any child who has been determined eligible under any of the disability categories can apply for the scholarship. There are different amounts awarded depending on the disability. So those amounts actually range from $7,598 to $27,000. Again, it is deemed by the disability. Now, as you can see, in 1819, we only had nine students that took the John Peterson Scholarship, coming up to a total of $71,758. In 1920, we actually went up to 16 students, putting us at $180,516. And then in 2021, we're now up to 27 students. The big thing about this to remember is this is not, the scholarship amounts are not what we receive as a district for our students that have a disability. So the amount is significantly higher than what we receive individually. So this is taking the money from us. Then, our Autism Scholarship. All students who apply for the Autism Scholarship have to have a disability under autism. This, well, in 2018-19, we had 12 students. And then again, this year, we have 12 students. Last year, we actually only had seven students that took this scholarship. This amount is actually awarded at $27,000. So there is a flat amount for that scholarship.
Tammy, could I ask you a couple of questions before you move on?
You sound like Dan.
The John Peterson and the Autism Scholarship. Where, how are those funded, and where do the funds come from?
Well, they come from the district. So it is actually, at one time, when they were first funded, they said they were going to give a cutoff. I've never seen anyone be denied that has applied. But that money actually comes from the district. People think that it comes like from ODE, but it does not. It is coming out of our funds.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Where do they apply? They apply at the state level, or they apply locally here?
They apply at the state level. So they apply to the Ohio Department of Education. There's actually scholarship applications. And then... And then, they actually have to go to a provider's school. So, there are different organizations that are provider's schools, and then that's where the funds go.
Tammy, on the homeschool numbers, obviously, the pandemic can be attributed to a large growth there. What do you attribute the increasing John Peterson numbers to? Is it just more awareness of the scholarship? Is it more students being eligible? Do you have, do you know why it's increasing so much?
Well, it fluctuates a lot in a lot of districts. It really kind of depends. Right now, I would say a lot of it has to do with the pandemic. So, they're not held to the same standards that we are. So, there are some different things that they can do. And some families, for consistency of their own children, elected to go to the scholarship rally this year.
So, we expect that that may go down again once we return to normal, whatever that may be?
It is always possible, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions about the scholarship before I? Okay. So, then when we're talking about disabilities, we have 16 different disability categories. And across the district, we have someone identified in all of them except for the category of deafblindness. So, right now, we have a little over 1,000 students that are identified with having a disability. And this is important because we, as a district, are responsible for child find. So, child find means that if there's any student out there in between the ages of three and 21 years old, typically, hopefully, we find them at three, then we actually have to help them reach out and try and get them services and get them enrolled in school. Any questions to help that?
So, every one of those students would have an IEP?
Every one of those students has an IEP, yes.
And those evaluations don't have to be necessarily students that come to Centerville Schools, correct?
That is correct.
If they live in a school district, then we provide evaluations and services for those students.
That is correct. So, anyone that is attending a non-public school within Centerville City Schools, we are responsible for providing their evaluation, writing and offering an IEP for those students, and then they can attend. And then, in some cases, I'm trying to think, like Dayton Christian takes scholarship. So, they could get, they could be deemed eligible here as having a disability. The Dayton Christian accepts John Peterson Scholarship. So, if they decide they want to send their child to Dayton Christian, then they would actually apply for the scholarship, and then they would attend there after being deemed a child eligible for a disability. Other questions?
One more question. I noticed that autism is listed as a disability category. Can students apply for both the autism grant or scholarship and the John Peterson? Or is it one or the other?
It is one or the other, but the amount is the same. So, for autism, it is $27,000 whether it is autism scholarship or whether it's the John Peterson Scholarship. The difference with the autism scholarship is they do not have to take any of the state testing that we are required to do. Any student that takes the John Peterson Scholarship is required to do the same state testing that we do.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, that's to my report tonight.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to do the next report. And I wanted just to give the board and publicly give an update of where we are in regards to back to school. So, we were thrilled to be back in school. As you all know, we came back to school last Tuesday, January the 19th of 2021, and we were excited about that. We had been remote for quite a while, and for good reasons, and we felt like that was the right thing to do at the time. But we're definitely ready to get back, and we're excited to see our students back in the building. But we are still offering a remote option. And so, we are still basically offering two educational programs, in-person and the remote person. And I thought I'd share with you just some statistics briefly. At our pre-K through first grade level, we have about 16.6 of our students that are still 100% remote. That's about 194 children. In grades two through five, we're 16.2% total remote. In grades six through eight, that's 16.2% that are totally remote. Here at the high school, the number has grown significantly. And currently, as of today, we have 41.8% of our high school students are total remote right now. Our district average, or district total percentage, is 27.4. But our high school is definitely, definitely up there as far as the total remote students go. We do have and continue to have families that reach out to us and indicate that as soon as the pandemic is under control, and like Tammy said, they, whether they're homeschooled or they're 100% remote right now, that they want to come back and be in-person. But there's definitely still fear out there about the pandemic and the virus and all those kinds of things, as you understand. Some of the challenges that we faced early on in the school year in regards to offering the two programs, is that, as I've shared with the board before, that it's a pretty big endeavor for teachers to teach to both the remote students and the in-person students simultaneously. Our teachers are very skilled, but they've worked very hard, and it's a pretty heavy lift for them to do both of those students, both the remote and the in-person. And thanks to our Curriculum Department, specifically Sharit Palik, our Director of Elementary Curriculum, we were able to make a shift. We were able to make a change in our K through five levels. And just last week, we started that shift at grades two through five, where we've actually pulled off central teachers who are doing 100% online teaching for those students in grades two through five in the remote area, 100% remote. Currently, our middle school teachers and high school staff are continuing to do the simultaneous teaching. And so, they're actually opening up and using a Zoom session while they teach in person, and also teach the students that are remote as well. So, again, we, especially as we reached out to our staff and asked for feedback and input, teachers at the lower level did share with us that it was a big challenge. And so, we did make some changes there. Some of the other challenges that we've faced, or some of the things that we've learned over the course of this year, is that we have, for a while there, a number of students who are not turning in on their video. And it's very difficult for teachers to see what's going on if students refuse to turn on their video. And that black screen that you get when you're using Zoom, is not very conducive to taking a read on how engaged the students are. And so, again, thanks to the high school principals and the middle school principals under the leadership of Adam Torello, our Director of Secondary Education, and with help from Shannon Morgan, our technology coordinator, is that they were able to put a code into our programming so that we could notify parents if their students were not engaged. And that's really been a big plus for us. Our students have been much more engaged. Our teachers have appreciated that opportunity to see students, and that's worked out very well. Also, in some situations, there was a need to kind of redefine expectations. And occasionally, we would have, especially at the high school where students do drive, where they were in-person, but maybe something would happen during the day, or maybe they wouldn't feel well, or they were tired, or whatever the reason is, that they would kind of shift back to the remote mode without sharing that information with school officials at the high school or with their parents. And again, we were able to push out through messaging out to parents that situation when it did occur, and we've been able to effectively, you know, curb that situation as well. So, it's just always interesting that every time you enter a new arena around teaching and learning, that there are certain challenges that you face. So, we've learned a lot through this school year. And again, kudos go out to all the administrators that are involved in making some of these changes. So, we're moving forward right now. We have had some COVID cases for both students and staff. But right now, our substitute teaching situation is manageable, and we're working hard to keep it that way. I'm very excited, and I did push out a message to all of our staff last Friday evening, or last, late last Friday afternoon, that Centerville High School will be a point of dispensary for the COVID vaccine, and it'll be an opportunity for all individuals in that 1B category, which includes all K-12 educators, everybody that's part of that organization, to participate in the COVID vaccine program. And we'll have that available here at Centerville High School a week from this Wednesday, which is February the 3rd. And all of our K-12 staff will have an opportunity to receive the first vaccine. Three weeks later, they'll have an opportunity to come back and get the second dose of the vaccine, which is on February the 24th. So, we feel good about that. We're excited that all of our teachers and all of our staff, through our entire organization, will have that opportunity, and hoping that that will make a difference as well. We still know we have to practice all the safety protocols and everything, but it is definitely a step in the right direction. Starting to see kind of a light at the end of the tunnel. So, that's kind of a very brief report. We're excited to be back and happy to be back, and I'll be happy to answer the questions that you have. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Item on the Agenda Seven, Ease the Filage Report.
Good evening, thank you. We're going to talk a little bit this evening about a refund that we received in the County Auditor's Office regarding real assessment fees, real estate assessment fees, some enrollment funding deductions. It's going to kind of tie in a little bit with what Tammy talked about earlier with our scholarships. We'll talk about that. Food Service Fund and the status of where we are in terms of finances for food service. And finally, I want to give you an update tonight on the audit for fiscal year 2020. So, about two weeks ago, there were some news headlines that the County Auditor was going to be refunding all taxing entities. So, it wasn't just school districts, it's also the townships and the cities, anyone who assesses, or any organization that assesses property taxes. There was going to be a refund for some of the fees that they charge us for. And there's various fees that they charge off per settlement that we receive each year. But one of those is for real estate tax assessment. And so, they have particular real estate employees that they pay for, and then also the reappraisal that we just went through. So, they deduct this money from us every time we get a tax settlement, so twice a year. And that money for them is a restricted fund, that they can only use them for that specific purpose. So, what happens after reappraisal is finished is that they evaluate the balance in that fund, and if there's money left, they give that back to the organizations. And so, Centerville is receiving $549,000 due to savings during the reappraisal. It just didn't cost them as much as what they had anticipated. So, we're going to be putting about $506,000 back into our general fund, and our bond retirement fund will donate a little bit by $17,000, and our permanent improvement fund of $24,000. So, we're happy to, you know, be receiving this refund as a one-time, you know, payment. We did receive some money back three years ago, but we received it back as a credit to the fee that they assess us each time. So, instead of actually giving us a check back or refund, they just offset that with some of that money. So, next, we'll move on to talk a little bit about some of the money that flows out of the district due to choices that families made with their students. So, this is not, this is not homeschooling, like Tammy talked a little bit about. But these are, these are choices like open enrollment. If a family decides to open enroll their student out to a, to a school district that accepts open enrollment students, money flows out for that. Community schools, so a lot of the virtual academies and some of the different, there is brick and mortar, brick and mortar community schools as well, but some of them are virtual. STEM schools down the road here, the regional STEM school is one of them where some of our students go. And then, and then, as we talked about with our special education costs, some families decide to take a scholarship and choose to educate other students elsewhere. So, the funding is, it's just transferred and deducted from our state money that we receive. The state just automatically deducts that, and they disperse it out to all the different organizations where these students go. At a minimum, they're transferring out $6,020 per student, because that's the funding amount per people. If they're, they're instituted, if it's a special education student, where they're weighted, you know, there's, there's more money that goes out, but at a minimum, it's So, first, just looking at the, at the enrollment and the number of students, and these are FTEs, so if a student only goes for part of the year, that's why you see the decimal places here. But our final for 2020, we had about 176 students that were being educated elsewhere through these choices. This year, so far, we're not, you know, PMS will continue to update this throughout the year, but we're at 213 students. So, this is a 21% increase in enrollment. And again, it really ties in with what we were looking at with homeschooling and the scholarship. And you can see the different categories. There are open enrollments down a little bit, but all the other categories, we have increases in terms of the students that are going out. And the dollars follow suit with that. In total, we were at about $1.44 million going out due to these choices, and we're up to about almost $1.8 million in deductions for the current year. And that will change, that, like I said, that gets updated every time we submit PMS data, which really is, I think, about weekly. But, so that'll fluctuate a little bit, but I think it'll probably hold pretty close by the time we get to June.
Okay, great, James. And that's like, could you give us an idea of how much was coming in for those students? What the difference is?
Yeah, it's closer to about $1,700 is what we just.
So, add the $1.758 million?
Oh, we've done that, Matt, to see what that is, to look at again. But it's obviously much less if at least this $6,000 is going out. Yes, it's, we've talked about that at many of our board meetings, that the money that we're getting is from a state funding perspective. A lot of the local tax dollars are going out.
Again, it's well over a million dollars is going out that they didn't give us.
Correct. Any other questions on that? So, then, our food service fund, we talked back in July, I think, you know, I first gave you an update, the balance in our food service fund was very, very low. And it's, and it's due to the fact that we've been in and out of remote settings or hybrid settings. And so, we haven't been serving as many lunches as what we would in a typical year. So, as of the end of December, our food service fund was negative by $412,000. This is about a $700,000 swing from what our balances were in December of 2019 and December of 2018. So, on your, on your agenda tonight, and we did talk a little bit about this last week, but on your agenda tonight, we are recommending that we transfer $250,000. We want to see where we end the year, maybe we can recover some of that. But, but we're pretty sure that we're not going to recover the full $400,000 if we're able to turn things around. So, you know, we want to be conservative for now. We may have another transfer in June, but we do want to recommend that we transfer that money to try to help the food service fund along. All students right now are eating for free, breakfast and lunch. And so, you know, I know that we're promoting that and trying to get families to, the students that are remote to come pick up those lunches. And so, we want to try to keep encouraging that as much as what we can.
And of course, that food service fund cannot be negative at the end of the year.
That's correct. It has to be at zero or a positive balance at the end of June.
Just to reiterate, this is not just for students that are free of reduced lunches. This is for every student in the district. As I do with an article I'm in Daily News today about this type of line in another school district, and it's just important to know that every student in this district, free or reduced, not free or reduced, can't get free breakfast and lunch.
Every kid, yes.
We encourage anyone that needs it, wants it, to come and get it. Despite what the other school districts in our lunches actually taste good and nutritious.
So, finally, just to give you an update on the fiscal year 2020 audit, I copied and pasted one, one paragraph from the letter that, of Miles, the documentation that the auditor put out, and the report will be on their website in the, in the coming weeks. But basically, the statements that they have audited, they present fairly in all material respects. That's as good as you're going to get from the auditor or state's office. And so, you know, we, we have complied with the county principles of the United States of America. So, all the things that we've done, we have a clean report. I'm happy to report that. I'm happy to report that. That credit goes to so many people. My staff is great, they're great at what they do. And so I want to just give a shout out to that group. But it trickles down then into all the people that are entering our positions and, and working with the budgets at the department level as well. And so everybody makes that happen. And so we're really happy with the audit results for this year.
Thank you. Congratulations.
That's it then for this evening. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to go to the action items on the agenda. We will vote on each of these. We are at item number eight, Treasurer's Recommendations. Eight A, consider approving the December 2020 financial statements to include the monthly general fund rolling report, the monthly general fund breakdown, the monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, and then and now purchase orders approved by administration certified by the treasurer and supported by board resolution totaling $144,720 and 20 cents.
Remove.
Second.
Questions or comments on the committee one? Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item eight B, consider approving a transfer from the general fund 001 to the food service fund 006 in the amount of $250,000 that Ms. Sauber just talked to us about.
Remove.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item eight C, consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings. December 14th, 2020, regular meeting. January 7th, 2021, organizational meeting. And January 19th, 2021, work session.
Hello?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number nine A. I believe I can take all these together tonight, okay? Schedule A, the superintendent recommends accepting the resignations as listed on Schedule A. Schedule B, the superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Schedule C, the superintendent recommends the employment or change in employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. Schedules D and D1, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. Schedule E, the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given.
Remove.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item nine B, consider approving the following firms to provide legal services to Centerville City Schools for calendar year 2021. Squire, Patton, Boggs, LLP. Hoover Six and Associates, LLC. Brickler and Egler. Coolidge, Wall, Wamsley, and Lombard, LPA. The Ohio School Boards Association. And Hunter Consulting.
Remove.
Second.
Questions, comments? Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item nine C, consider adopting a resolution providing Centerville City Schools the opportunity to apply for a waiver from the Ohio Department of Education for the 2021, 2022 school year as Centerville Schools will not be providing career technical education courses to students enrolled in our middle schools.
Remove.
Second.
Tom, you want to just touch on that, please?
Sure, Mr. Schreier. Every year, for the last several years, we have asked you to approve this resolution. We are very happy with the courses study, the curriculum that we have in our middle schools. We have a fantastic career education program in Centerville High School and feel like that serving our students well. So we like to continue with our program of study at the middle schools. And this is just something that the Ohio Department of Education asks us to do annually if we're not going to add or offer career technical courses at the middle school level.
Thank you. Call roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Nine D, consider approving a resolution declaring certain items of personal property obsolete and unneeded and authorizing the superintendent or his designate to sell the personal property.
Summon.
Second.
Tom?
Sure. Again, this is an annual resolution we do in January of every year. Just by approving this resolution, we have the opportunity as things that we have in the school district wear out or that we're not using anymore or obsolete, that we, by board policy, can sell those. And so we do that. So we do bring in some additional income, albeit sometimes it's very small. But that includes everything from school buses to other pieces of material and equipment and things like that that we're not using, is dated. And through John Wesley's office, many times, we put them online and sell them online through a GovStiles website. And we do get money for those things, including very, very, very used school buses, so.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number nine E, consider approving a resolution regarding paid personal days for quarantine, also known as the quarantine, or the COVID quarantine leave bill.
Remove.
Second.
Questions, comments? Dr. Henderson?
Sure. We have been asking you to approve quarantine leave really since the fall, and we appreciate your support of that. We have continued to have legal vet this thoroughly for us and to be in compliance with the law and auditor's rules and regulations. We're asking you to make some, to approve again. There were some slight adjustments that were needed and necessary to be compliant with the law. So this is in regards to staff members who are on quarantine due to workplace exposures, not from out of school work, but for workplace exposures only.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number nine F, consider approving a memorandum of understanding with the Centerville Classroom Teachers Association regarding House Bill 404, which became effective November 22nd, 2020. This new legislation makes modifications to the statutory requirements for teacher and counselor evaluations and permits the school district board of education to elect to, like, not to complete the performance evaluation of a teacher or counselor in the 2020, 2021 school year where the board determines that it is impossible or impractical to do so.
Remove. Second.
Dr. Henderson again, please.
Sure. So as you can imagine, this year has been an unprecedented year with the pandemic. And it is very difficult to be, to be fair. And I will say that our administrative team has been working with our staff constantly and continuously throughout both our, the 100% remote that we've been on and even now as we continue to offer remote and in-person. So it's not like we are not supervising the classrooms. We are. But in a regular, normal year, there are certain dates and due dates for classroom observations and evaluations to be completed. And because we've been in and out of school this year, it's been very difficult to complete those and to meet those timelines and deadlines. And this House Bill 404 provided some grace for school districts to understand that this year has been just a much different year. So we hope to be back in a normal school year. And we have a great relationship with the Centerville Classroom Teachers Association. And from time to time, we do enter into a situation where we both collaboratively work on a memorandum of understanding. And again, legal counsel has vetted this thoroughly as well. So we're asking you to approve that. And just because it's just been an unbelievable year for us to work through, so.
Sure. Thank you. Any other comments on that? Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number 10, any final comments for the good of the order for any board member? Seeing done, could I have a motion for adjournment for item 11?
Remove.
Megan.
Laura, call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparg?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. We are adjourned.